We will now call the Hampton County Council Meeting, uh, the six, the November fourth, two thousand nineteen, six P. M. Meeting to order. Brings aside item number two on the agenda, invocation, pledge of allegiance, two point one invocation, if you can, please stand with us. Councilman Williams will lead us in invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father, Lord, we want to thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Lord, we want to thank you for this day. Thank you for everyone that thought it wasn't robbery to come out to the county meeting. Lord, we want to thank you because you've been better to us than we've been to ourselves. And most of all, Lord, we want to ask you for forgiveness of our sins, seen and unseen. And thank you for all that you have done and all that you're going to do as we go before you tonight to conduct the business of this county. Give us the wisdom and understanding to make the right decision. And Father, don't forget about the Bereen family, the ones in the hospital, the nursing home, and our men and women fighting the walls over there. Just be with them and take care of them. And don't forget about us, Lord. Just be with us, take care of us. All these blessed beings, be the same, my prayer. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Williams, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, item two point two?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to item three on the agenda, adoption of the agenda and consent agenda, three point one consent agenda, three point two for two thousand nineteen Hampton County Council Meeting Agenda. Got a few changes we're gonna have to make on here. Give me one second to catch up with them. Alright, it appears that item ten point one point one will be removed or deferred this evening. We still have, uh, still waiting on some documents to come in. Item ten point one point four, we're waiting on an edit to this document to be made. We're not gonna do anything with ten point three point one, now that'll state the same. Um, ten, item ten point one point two, on that one, I think we just need to add on the end of the statement there, after parliamentary procedures of South Carolina ordinance, put in parentheses, preferred language. If you look at item number four in your packet, that refers to a specific one. And then, that's the model rules book that all that's asked for, and a couple of other small items there in model rule eighteen. The title line with strike brackets, motion to discipline, and then bracket. Line two, under model rule eighteen, strike body and replace it with the, uh, replace it with chair. Line seven, in model rule eighteen, strike motion and two thirds vote of body and replace it with chair. And those are the only changes I have. Does anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chair, you said to replace, instead of Hampton County Council, replacing the chair?
Um...
Instead of body?
No, model rule eighteen, in the title line itself, strike bracket, motion to discipline, and bracket. Then line two, under model rule eighteen, that's, I don't think that's in the handout, it'll be the book, I believe. We would strike body and replace it with chair. And line seven, under model rule eighteen, strike motion and two thirds vote of body and replace it with the chair. And then the others were, remove item ten point one, or defer ten point one point one and defer item ten point one point four. With those noted changes, was the, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda and the November fourth, two thousand nineteen Hampton County Council Meeting Agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carried unanimously.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Mr. Buddy. Now think of the tie on the second. Alright, that brings us to public hearings. In each of these public hearings, as a public speech, you'll have to keep your comments to the particular public hearing where, that we're in. We do have a few for the evening, public hearing, um, each speaker will be limited to five minutes. We try to avoid question and answer after the public hearing is finished. If we have the facts with us to answer some of the questions that you present, we will give them to you. If not, we'll have to defer to the next meeting, or you could come by for appointments to get them. Alright, that brings us to item four point one, third reading of the amendment to Hampton County Model Rules of Parliamentary Procedure of South Carolina Counties Ordinance, and gentleman as number four in our packets. The public hearing is now open for parliamentary procedures, model rules. Do we have anyone who wants to speak or comment on that?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
One of the foundations we had in our retreat that I understood that, um, there wasn't so much discussion about what we do as our commissions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how do we know that our commission is gonna do it when they, shall I say, um, they're not well attended? You have enough to go, how do we support that this is being carried on like the, um, planning commission?
Um, the planning commission in particular, since we use that one.
Well, that's...
Right, I understand. And we, we all, we have a liaison appointment from council for each of our commissions and boards under us. And that one would fall under Mr. Darren Wiggins. And, uh, and then, each one of us have a set of them that we have, that we're supposed to attend. I know it's difficult to get them all, but we just have to do our best.
What would we do, we notify you in writing, or Ms. Newton in writing, if you find a bear?
That, that would be good, yes.
That's, that's procedure.
Yes, sir. Alright. Anyone else? If not, we will now close the public hearing under item four point one. Brings item four point two, third reading of sale of Ruth Jones' dialysis to Hampton Regional Medical Center. I now open the public hearing on item four point two. Do we have anyone that's wanting to speak on this?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Williams?
There's some interest being accrued on this loan, well, how, six months, wasn't it? We have actually had a loan from the bank. We, we discussed that the, there would be a certain amount that's not been sent to be made whole, and how much total amount is the county total gonna receive back the monies they investigate, vested in, including the counseling, legal fees, and cha, and changing of the link.
Okay. After everyone has spoken, I will defer that one to the administrator.
Thank you.
Alright. Does anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing on item four point two. And Ms. Rose, do you have any exact information with you on that?
We haven't requested a, you know, a final, uh, figure from USDA because we didn't know exactly when the closing would happen, and that'll be dependent upon that figure. Uh, it's still, we've only had the loan since March, I think's when it closed, so I can't imagine it'll be much, but, uh, we've still got the balance of the two, from two forty, and that has accrued some interest, and the loan was from USDA, not local bank. So I don't, I don't have an answer.
Okay.
I mean, I guess as soon as, uh, Mr. Solomon's and the attorney for the hospital sets the closing date, we can get a figure. Closing figure?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
A payoff figure for USDA? Well, as soon as we set a closing date, we can get the amount for that correct.
Yeah. As soon as you set a closing date, we can get a figure, but the amount is, that's the amount. Okay.
But the legal fees will pay from our, uh, budgeted amount of the legal fees.
Okay.
Alright, so this is still public, right?
Well, I'll close the public hearing.
Right. Um, so we're gonna proceed, we're gonna motion to us do this tonight, or we're gonna wait till we get the proper, prepare our table and until we get the actual numbers in from Brother Solomon?
Well, we can't get a exact figure until we get a closing date, and we can't get a closing date until we approve the third reading to actually enter into the agreement. And, uh...
Well, all said and done, though, we need a little better to question, Lord.
Understood.
So what is your pledge?
Um, when we get to that segment, we'll reopen the discussion on it.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you. That brings us to item four point three, which I was supposed to defer. Uh, we can still have the public hearing on it today, of a third reading of the Administrative Emergency Secession Plan and Policy. Do we have anyone, we will now open the public hearing on item four point three. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on item four point three?
On that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Reason of the defer, 'cause we didn't get the, um, the draft, outdated draft, of what we stated that we wanted to be changed in that.
Right.
From what it was to where we wanted to be, as far as the whole council being a part of that.
Okay. So, understood, and we had a long discussion.
We had a long discussion on it, so then we came up to go ahead and do it.
Okay. I'm confident we'll have that by our, or in time for the next council meeting.
I don't have it, um, remember, I requested a copy of it, but I did not receive the copy of it.
Okay. Alright, we'll make sure you get that copy so we can get the edits put in, and then we can move forward.
So we'll understand you'll table it to the next meeting.
Uh, well, we took it out of the third rea...
Right.
We just do, we're gonna go ahead, we're doing the public hearing on it now, and the next time we'll, um, just have, we'll add the third reading back on. Do we have any further comments on item four point three? If not, we will now close the public hearing in item four point three. Now we move on to item five, public comments. Do we have anyone signed up? And I see that we have, uh, on the agenda, item five point one, Mr. Joshua James, in regards to recreation. You can come forward, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, all right, good evening, Mr. Chair, and I'm a board member and county representative. Uh, my name is Joshua James, I'm currently, I work at the school district as a student chief advocate, while I mentor a hundred and fifty kids. Um, I'm also a co-mentor for the Little League Football Program in our county. I'm also served as junior boys' basketball coach, uh, for we have high school, uh, C.L. Net, and say, right, now president. My life is dedicated a hundred percent to, to the Rock community. Um, I've led my resident barnyard, watered reeds, and I came back by choice about my course, um, rather than the blue versus white, I'm happy. Um, the reason we be here today, if I'm asking for it, even possible, uh, funds from the budget, or at least correspondence with the recreational department or the council, to see if we could buy it through fifteen points dot com for the Little League program. Um, the reason why I'm asking for this amount is to provide equipment for the kids in our program. Um, currently, we have fourteen and around fifty-five kids, and this is, um, we are at the least amount of people that I've ever seen in our Little League program since I came to U.S. Little Child myself. Um, the number one reason being is cost. They currently have co-mentors, the price for a child, a charge of seventy dollars a child, which is about to charge seventy dollars for signups. But after that seventy dollar fee, um, parents for now are required to pay for all equipment, including handling the show pass, which could easily tally up to three hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, I work full-time, I work full-time, and I have two kids in the program, and I found, I found it hard last year to come up with some money, which I can see why a lot of people in our county can't. Uh, this is the primary reason, from my standpoint, of why the numbers have dropped so dramatically in the program. Uh, for example, the P.E. program now has ten kids, they're pulling up from our small park program to the facility. Uh, I know for certain that we're the only team in our, the, the ten teams in the, uh, local youth football league that does not provide equipment for children. Uh, I understand the money does not fall out of the gap, and there's other things going on in the agenda, and going on in the county may be a more important, but I will say this again, um, I know each of you have dedicated their life and service to the county, and definitely care about kids, and what I do know is that our county suffers for a lot of things. I believe that football, because of the mentorship, that's the avenue to reach these kids, and that's the program focused, due to lack of knowledge this year, and we have some kids from the south side of the county that came, and I believe that this deserves that, um, gateway to the south nation. We know that the school system is, I talk a lot of that, and get, getting our kids together at younger ages and bringing them to sports, I think, can help the county's mission. So I know, uh, asking the problem cannot be helpful, but I'm just asking that the board, uh, I mean, the council, at least consider possibly, um, the market question for the Little League program next year. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. James, do you still have commissioners?
Yes, sir, um, right now...
Who are they?
Mr. Keeler, this is the commissioner, I have a co-mentor.
Okay, only two commissioners?
Yes, sir, for our program, yes.
Um, I would coach the Little League with, of course, I didn't do it by myself, but we used to borrow your equipment and other stuff from the high schools that was worn out, um, community service and fundraisers. In saying that, all that's broke down, and you don't have enough people to participate in anything? Is this what I'm hearing?
No, we have, uh, fourteen. It's just, my turn if I think it's have around thirty, fifty kids, and you don't let more kids fill a football team. It's hard, you feel hard pressed to play football games when you have only two kids on the sideline, and injuries, and parents not being able to make the big games. And the primary reason for my to ask to have, why they shouldn't not participate, is basically cost of equipment and the signups and things like that.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. James.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I want to thank before you do, Brother James, uh, I was looking throughout the internet, and I'm gonna get with our county grant writer, Ms. Brianna, they have grants out there, so, I mean, we gonna see what we can do to make this happen for Hampton County.
Do you, do you have any trouble with funding of the lights and the, um, practice field and at that arena?
Uh, no, sir, currently, uh, we, that's not, we have competition. We, we tend to plan all that with the staff and be charged.
I'm beginning to come a little familiar with the United States Department of Agriculture, and it's solely affiliates, and there is a lot of grants that can be asked for, for what the guidelines are. Maybe you and I and, uh, Darren can get together and have a little fireside chat.
I'd be most appreciative of that, sir, if you could.
I would. Thank you very much, Mr. James.
Thank you.
We'll certainly look into that for you, see what we can help with.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. Who do we have next?
Uh, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams? Good.
How you doing, Brother Williams?
In terms of recreation, though, I've had over twenty people come to me and ask me if we have to borrow money, and I'll go to the paper funding, for paying the bills. I addressed this to a legislature, and I know you're not answering my comments, but I think this should be addressed in the next retreat, and, and was asked, where are we at in the county, if this is the truth? This is why I'm asking you publicly, because I don't, I don't get to speak as a county member, that's why I do publicly. How much money have we really collected from the green energy and that? There was supposed to be a fair bit of money for taxes, down from the proper testimony, the proper level of demonstrations, as it all happened. How many employees is working in our county are paying taxes? Where are we at? We lost two, B and L, and everything was dissealed, and I don't believe that there's any profit going in, everything going out, and everybody coming in. I would like to have some research on that, so maybe we can afford the recreation. And as these people come to the evidence, sixty-five, seventy have testified, they give you a heart, and you should respond to them. The taxpayers are really tired, and not having enough money to do anything. We've lost a major fund in an Allen Dale County, which is north of Pacific, uh, Aitken also, which has nothing to do with the steel jobs that we fled down to our county. We've lost some businesses in our county. Where are we at? And I would like Mr. Strifton, maybe to come to us, out with refugees, where we can answer these questions, but where are we going? Transparency is what I brought up. As far as, as far as the, how are we able to borrow any money, but we can't even pay our bills? Now, I want to know, I'm one of the bosses of this, of this company. I would like to know if this is true, and if it is, I would like to know where it's from. And I think I need some documentation of it, and somebody make a general statement. And I would like for all the counties to fully, to fully understand that transparency must be a promise to the county, and I honestly look forward to a good conversation or changing the desire for the, I want to know who we're in charge of this county. Who? Yes, sir, I think, uh, I would like to thank you, but I won't find out who your stakeholders are, and who provides your ideas for something. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. James, you signed up. Did he leave? Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Altman, and I'm here from Company Extension, also originally regular and doctor, and, um, community coordinator. Uh, I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of Hampton County, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Company Extension to tell you a couple things about our role. Um, previously, I have had experience in healthcare and, um, Hampton City, and a Januia background in the men's health health. I also have a background as a registered nurse. So together with our health and nursing and education background, we're lucky enough to, um, to employ those who are in extension. We are a new rural health and nutrition agent, Princeton University, is a land-grant university who has expertise in academic research and extension. And a lot of people are not aware that extension is represented in all of our, South Carolina State is also a land-grant university. Typically, people think of extension and think of agriculture, farming, livestock, but a Company Extension is forward-thinking, Princeton University is forward-thinking, and recognizing the need for someone in a think tank with rural health and nutrition. Why does that bring us to Hampton County? Unfortunately, Hampton County, according to the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, has the third highest obesity rate in the, um, state. Glee County, Marion County are also one of the first programs like ourselves to reach out to rural health and nutrition. What does the obesity rate do, or the consequences of it? We see higher rates of diabetes, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, and the consequences of that. We want a healthier Hampton County. Our focus is to increase access to healthy food, maintain and create safe places for physical exercise, and guide lifestyle changes for our communities. We want to enhance a connection between businesses, agriculture, education, healthcare, and community planning. Our purpose tonight here is to simply introduce our goals, and if we can ever be of assistance, or if you just need to talk, or you need some research about health in our Hampton County, please don't hesitate to contact us. We look forward to your input and for the future of a healthier Hampton County. Thank you, and, okay, have a question.
You said you had a think tank. What is your goals?
Um, just as we said, we just want to increase healthier Hampton County with an increased access to food and more physical exercise.
Well, have you really figured out how to get to the community with this? And your think tanks on how to approach your goals?
We have been busy data collecting, and, um, we'll be glad to share that the book about this is not something that'll be fixed overnight, and that's why I shared I'm a twenty-seven year resident of Hampton County, I'm not going anywhere, I chose to raise my family here, and we want a little longer in the country.
I think you see five guys that's done the same thing.
Exactly. Thank you very much, and once again, you be good.
Where's your office at?
Oh, there we go.
One, one moment?
Right, um, um...
Same mistake.
Same place.
Mr. Hollinsworth has a comment?
Yes, um, the services that you offer by, with the rural health, uh, is there any cost, uh, to the county?
Not right now, not right now, no. Um, like, there's, um, data blessing right now, um, and, um, the, let's see, can I allow, was it the law?
Sure.
Okay.
It's hell.
If we get into this situation, it doesn't happen overnight. We're not here to sell people, oh, you just need to eat more healthier. We're here to let the community, and we're gonna be working with the community to come up with ideas on our own, how can we make it healthier?
And that's a team.
It sounds so simple, but it, we didn't get in this situation every night, and we're not gonna get in, you know, we're not gonna fix it.
Well, these ladies are part of your think tank.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we have to access the Princeton University as well, and Januia's expertise is called health, and, and don't mind, I'll let her speak with us.
What power is?
Yeah. Just to add very quickly, uh, contrary to what Company Extension typically does, which is direct education, we are focusing on policy systems and environmental, environmental change, so empowering the community to make the change sustainable and long-lasting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Come back now. Who do we have next?
Jacob Broderson. I get it right that time?
Long time, don't see.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, thank you. Yes, uh, as mentioned, my name's Jacob Broderston, I'm a recent resident of, uh, Hampton. Uh, just last year retired from, uh, twenty years in the Air Force as a fighter aircraft captain, and currently I'm working as a, uh, deeper on the other things.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Uh, my background has always been aviation, I did aviation since I was nineteen years old. I currently have a bachelor's of aeronautics, of the life of aviation safety, actively pursued a master's in the St. Arena, and I'm a paid license aircraft pilot in the camp. Um, I've heard a lot of commentary regarding the... I've heard a lot of commentary regarding the proposed airport expansion here recently and I, while the, uh, the more immediate benefits, I believe, are probably obvious as far as bringing in business, bringing in exposure to Hampton County through the spending of the government, which by the way, this plan is wonderfully aggressive, I love it with everything about it. But where we may be missing out on one thing that many may not have thought of, and that's career opportunities. Uh, of course, as Phil, I read earlier today, average age of pilot in this country is four to eight years old. The average age of an aircraft mechanic, uh, of my certification level, is maybe fifty-one. Twenty-five percent of all aircraft mechanics are over ages sixty-four. We are heading toward a massive shortage of both pilots as well as mechanics. And we are already situated in a perfect spot with the next airport station for both, directly next to TCL campus and a local high school. By adding forty hangars, it not only produce parking spaces for aircraft, yes, that's great, it means hangars can become classroom and workshop. They can expose teenagers to the aviation community, whether they be young, applying or picking. We've made young people who have never even considered a career in aviation, but now they know, we know how to employ them in the county.
May I ask a question? Uh, TCL, how in the world can they do any, when their hands are clasped tight as they can? They, they perform a nursing activity and some light duty tech schools, how do you generate how TCL is going to affect the county in aviation?
Well, sir, currently TCL operates a FAA A and P course of UCL. Now, while it would be unlikely to get a full-blown A and P training program certified here in Hampton, it is possible that we could potentially, uh, take some of the load off of that campus. Again, I can't speak for TCL, I'm not affiliated with them all, but the potential would be there as an option, like introductory or shop courses. If nothing else, simply familiarize sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old high school kid or even a state national guard member, whoever shows us.
The brain cell for TCL is in Beaufort County. The brain cell in most of the monies is in Beaufort County. Have you coordinated with them and asked the possibilities of this correlation?
No, sir, no, this is primarily brainstorming on my part, uh, as far as additional factors could be involved.
Do you respond to, to an organization, SC eight eleven?
Exactly.
South Carolina eight one one, safety, before dig or, or getting involved with safety? Could that be an alternative to teaching also? Otherwise, you've got safety in what you do. And I'm turning it around on you, but anything with safety to do at it and how do you handle it? Is that a first prerogative for you with this? Because putting hands on to a youngster is just hypothetical.
Yes, sir.
Safety.
Yes, absolutely. Same is the number one concern that you made, as you mentioned. Any activity would be, Hampton County looking at aircraft looking at the direct supervision of quality of aviation in the county. Now, yes, no, such as myself, any activity we introduce students to train these too, would be a part of the direct supervision of the field.
Thank you.
Rather than generally turn this into a high school auto shop and, and term of service.
Thank you.
Um, that was, uh, just, just as a comment I wanted to make tonight was, uh, again, while the airport does have the potential to improve access to Hampton County, uh, I believe it's supposed to look at the potential to expand employment options and, uh, enable the more businesses to access the, access the region. Um, this whole program has my full support and, uh, I support these policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollisworth?
Uh, I'd like to comment on the statistics, um, my brother is an aircraft mechanic and he's fifty-six years old. So your statistics is right on target.
Yeah, yes, sir. It's, uh, it's a matter of being involved in a lot of, lots of knowledge and the passion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Who do we have next?
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Um, previous, as the previous speaker, um, just reiterated that, uh, economic development and safety, uh, is a problem for this council with the, uh, airport expansion. Uh, just as the FYI, I was informed today that the, uh, the case, the litigation case between Hampton County and myself, uh, has been recently scheduled. Um, the judge has ordered a, um, mandatory mediation with Chairman Bishop and also Chairman, um, Woodruff, uh, from the Airport Council to be present. Yes, I hope that with, uh, with the support that, uh, has been spoken of here, uh, we'll be able to work out an agreement this time to get this done. And, um, so obviously to move on with the county's work, the airport, whatever the county decides to do with the airport, but I want to reiterate, I hope, I'm in hopes that we're able to settle this, uh, litigation. Been very short order because, uh, just as an FYI, it is scheduled for a jury trial very soon. And again, I want to appreciate the gentleman who has me for counting the airport and the safety because that's basically what our whole business is wrapped around. Uh, and again, I'll invite all five of you or anyone that would like to come out and see what we do, um, inviting you out to, to do that. Only one or two of you at this point have been able to do that, but, um, the luck for you have come out and checked us out. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
All right, thank you. Mr. Nguyen, you have a question? Have a good day. Thank you very much.
Chip Mixon?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Jim Mixon, uh, yeah, with the highest state, we got, uh, a few moments specifically, thank you very much, and I did have a question. Uh, so to, I keep, uh, do you like this, tell him to follow me and answer my question. I have a very simple question, and that was, both of you, so respected Ned President, and she was, uh, very forthcoming. I do appreciate that, I do appreciate each and every one of you as well, but I know you've got a very tough position. I know it's not easy sitting in that chair. And I know you, you worked the call to get better every hundred times during Hampton County. And again, I follow you for that. Uh, again, I did get this, uh, response, uh, she did ask me a few more questions at the time, I did not. Uh, I would like to throw one more question after this point, but I did have to give it some thought. Get some other questions. Understanding knowing that, and what got my attention, you know, two point six billion dollars were borrowed, so that's very sizable debt that they don't, and again, I, and I do appreciate I did hear. You both say it would not fall on the Hampton County taxpayer, and I greatly appreciate that, because again, I essentially indeed owe over burden. Uh, however, the payback is, in this assuming that two point six billion dollars borrowed, hopefully it won't take that much, but let's say it does, because that's what's on the threshold, that's the benchmark. We understand, I know it's going to be over eleven thousand dollars a month payment, so if your payment's eleven thousand dollars a month, would it be safe to say? That the net revenue that comes in must be at least over that, because with, with expansion or growth, you're going to have more costs, you're going to have language, you're going to have insurance, et cetera, and on and on. And I know, I'm sure, and I'm not saying you have not done your due diligence, I'm sure you have, but let me say this, Hampton County residents are trusting you to make sure that there's enough revenue that this product goes forward to take care of that, that will be sizable. And, um, again, I'm all for expansion and concerned Hampton County citizens, all for growth, all for a deep site that will bring economic growth to this county.
Mr. Mixon? One of the major things I'm concerned, one is the words, and other things. What other things? You know, and I understand it takes a pretty good while to put these hangers in. Who's going to pay the interest on this loan while, while it's being contracted? And who is the guarantee that these gentlemen is going to do these contracts? Because I don't see nothing in writing, and if you don't have a legal binding contract, it's like.
Well, I don't think, I mean, by all debts, it's business that's done with.
Yeah, I, I don't think Mr. Mixon could speak in authority on that end.
Uh, I'm speaking of all the, with growth comes more sense, more manpower, demand is, okay. And I know as far as economic development, also being here last couple meetings, I've also heard that this litigation and legal matters going on between the county and company too. And I understand this economic, or this airport expansion is for economic growth to bring in business. So my question is this, what kind of message does it send if Hampton County is not honoring the contract that they have with the company too? If another council without a line comes in, we, we make promises to the county to, it is, in ten or fifteen years now, we don't know, what kind of message is that sending to the business? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
That's all, sir.
That's all we have. All right, that brings us to item six, approval of minutes, six point one, October seventh, two thousand and nineteen, Hampton County Council meeting minutes. That would be item two A, I believe, in our packet. Have you all previously read these?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on, um, I'm looking over on, on page one of five on the, um, paper, so there's a typo, um, need to eliminate the praying of the call star. It's listed in there twice.
Where exactly are you at? Is that in God?
At the bottom of the first page on the right.
Okay.
Where it says the praying of the call star.
All right.
And if you turn the page, you see the same thing, says praying of the call star.
Okay.
Other than that, I can see anything.
Anyone else have anything? So if the correction of the stated typo was the pleasure of counsel?
Move approved minutes with the noted changes.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Bring us item six point two, October twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, Hampton County Council meeting minutes. Anyone have any issues with this one?
Um, with the chairman on page, on first page, uh, one of six, uh, this is public comments, uh, typo, Hampton County Arts. And I'm not sure if that's council or. It has C O U N T I L.
Where are you at again now?
Okay, this is public comments.
Yes, sir.
On the first page.
Mm-hmm.
Miss Heff, Miss Heather, Bloomer, Hampton County Arts, the next word.
Okay.
And that's just a typo. I believe it's supposed to be council.
Okay. Still need an addition of council there? Anything else on these? If there's no other corrections or revisions, was the pleasure of counsel with the stated correction?
Move approved with, uh, noted changes, Jim.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item seven, presentation. We have no presentation scheduled this evening. Item eight, appointments. We have no appointment scheduled this evening. Item nine, resolution proclamations. We have no resolutions or proclamations this evening. Bring us to item ten, ten point one, third reading of ordinance. Ten point one point one was deferred, so we'll move on to item ten point one point two. Third reading to the amendment to Hampton County Model Rules, Parliamentary Procedure for South Carolina Counties Ordinance, Preferred Language and Parenthesis. Do we have a motion to approve this amendment for third reading?
Chairman, I make a motion that we, um, approve the third reading to the amendment to the Hampton County Model Rules of Parliamentary Procedures for South Carolina Ordinance.
Okay. Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item ten point one point three.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, yes, sir.
If it, if it, at the approval of council, I ask that I be step out since this dinner with the dialysis, uh, and I'm on, on the hospital.
Okay, so you're going to recuse yourself from ten point one for three?
Right, yes.
All right. As previous, we do need a written statement to be submitted to the clerk describing the recusal.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
That's a good point, John. Do we have a form that we can fill out and, and come by? Is there a proper form that you use for this? And the reasons behind it?
Mr. Newton? You can format us one? Thank you, ma'am. All right, so we will move forward. Ten point one point three, third reading to sale, to the sale of the roof general dialysis to Hampton Regional Medical Center. Was the pleasure of counsel?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move this be tabled until we get the necessary information, like we discussed, discussed later, because of, um, we don't have the accurate figures and hearsay. And I would like to see a more firm amount of, uh, numbers involved. You say you, I believe you can. So I would appreciate you, uh, sidetracked to the next meeting until this information is provided.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise? Motion carries three to one. Item ten point one point four was deferred. Bring us item ten point two, second reading of ordinances. Ten point two point one, an ordinance to provide for the sale of real property owned by Hampton County, South Carolina, to Project Flash and other matters. Was the pleasure of counsel in regard to item ten point two point one? Or did you have something to add, Mr. Strickland?
No, for me, I shall leave, um, I'll, I'll address the next two.
Okay.
Um, nothing that will change since, um, council approved the grocery pilot, um, we are at this waiting, um, closing day, uh, for the real estate portion.
Okay. So was the pleasure of counsel on ten point two point one?
Mr. Chairman, I move we, uh, approve the ordinance to provide for the sale of real property owned by Hampton County, South Carolina, Project Flash and other matters.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed likewise? Motion carries four to one. Bring us item two point, ten point two point two, providing for infrastructure for special source res, for special source revenue credits to an industry currently known to the county as Project Flash. Authorizing an infrastructure credit agreement between Hampton County and Project Flash to further amend the amended and restated master agreement for the establishment of the Quad County Industrial Park One, Park Two, and Park Three by and among Hampton County, Allendale County, Bamberg County, and Barnwell County. In Barnwell County, the MCIP agreement so as to include the additional property in Hampton County as part of the park, providing for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes payable under the MCIP agreement and the other matters related. other matters relating there too. Was the pleasure of counsel in regards to item ten point two point two?
Did Bert, Robert Strickland, did you check the safety T I R for the company like you said you would, Flash?
Oh, they're, uh, safety room?
Yes.
Yeah, they, um, they got, Bert, the high one was...
Should have been one.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
I actually, I'll visit their point, so...
Well, I mean, you, you ask them that they're always look at safety reflection of the company. Thank you.
All right, so was the pleasure of counsel on item ten point two point two?
Mr. Chair, this, uh, sorry. Mr. Chairman, uh, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the, uh, second reading for approval of ten point two point two, which is providing for infrastructure or special sources, uh, revenue credits to an industry currently known to the county as Project Flash, et cetera.
All right, we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item ten point three, first reading of ordinances. Ten point three point one, an ordinance to approve amendment of the agreement for the development of a joint county industrial park by and between Hampton County, South Carolina, and Colleton County, South Carolina, providing for the development of jointly owned and operated industrial business park, include additional property in Colleton County as part of the joint county industrial park. Was the pleasure of counsel in regards to item ten point three point one? And Mr. Strickland?
This is the, um, the brand new share in Brent, uh, Old Land, Collin County, and it's part of Collin. Uh, of course, Hampton is a part of the county in particular, uh, has Hampton Bar and, and we filed one percent of the back.
So, we, there would be the host county, and we would receive the one percent?
Right, there would be one, one, you know, Hampton the host, the council would be the host in Hampton's park.
Okay. Mr. Wendell, you have a question?
Walterburg is booming. Everything is going on. Is this, uh, a formality to try and get a penny out of them?
I don't know.
What is, what is the purpose?
I was, I was trying to take advantage of, of, uh, revenue.
What I'm saying is, I like to see some of that activity in Wat, in Hampton. They soaking us dry.
Would we go with it on the agenda?
What's Gene, Gene Russell doing there?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Maybe one way is shorter, I mean, every time.
All right, so was the pleasure of counsel in regards to item ten point three point one?
I make a motion we approve ten point three, uh, four one, Mr. Jim.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Bring us to item eleven, bids. We have no bids this evening. Item twelve, council briefings, twelve point one, county attorney's update. Mr. Solomon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, counsel. I have several things, just, just an update. Remember, probably four or five months ago, long when I had time flies and having fun, we signed up to join the opioid litigation in the state court, represented by Mr. Parker, uh, Mr. Terry Finkler. Well, paired it is a federal, um, uh, action, uh, class action suit, also pending, but in federal, we received, the county received, uh, notification of that, that federal claim with the opt-out provision, and if we don't want to participate in federal claim, we opt out. I have reached out to Mr. Parker, um, when I received this, um, I have not heard, I haven't had a response from him. So, um, my, my advice to counsel is, and we follow the advice of our attorney in this matter, and as soon as I hear back from Johnny or, or Terry, uh, Finkler, then, um, I'll bring it to counsel immediately, of course, and let you know. I, I don't know, um, I'm not a class action lawyer, so I'm not, I don't know what the ramifications are opting out in terms of this particular situation, whether it would be beneficial or not. Will, will the secret vice of counsel, that we, that represent us in that open, it's about, any questions about that? Mr. Wendell?
Yes, sir. Um, anything we could vote the use, the use of, uh, not promote it, but restrict the use of opioids? And I've studied the federal level pretty good. We're on the same page, but there's a lot of U Canopies coming, and the lawsuits is including mental health above, uh, you know, direct penalties and damages. So, but, but like you said, Johnny's the man, but I think he will lead us to going with the feds.
Well, uh, we'll see.
But that's my opinion.
This particular issue, I, I defer.
Okay.
Um, the CSX litigation revolve, involving the Emmett's Hats situation that was began, that began in twenty fourteen by the South Carolina Department of Revenue, uh, where it didn't begin, the D O R assessed this hat, this railroad property across the state, including Hampton County. CSX filed a lawsuit challenging the assessment. That's been ongoing since twenty fourteen. You, y'all will remember that in the last year, uh, probably six months also, we had an opportunity to either request a, a contested hearing on this power, or just to stay out of it and let it go. We received, uh, I already had a conversation with Handworth, Sinkleboy, one of the larger firms in the state, who is involved in this, uh, on a routine basis, a friend of mine, here who boasts, which represented the county before. And he engaged a litigator in his firm to file the, the request for petition for the contested hearing. We thought it would cost us money. Remember that conversation?
Yes.
And it did not, because counties are exempt from having to pay the five hundred dollar filing fee if you request a contested hearing. Well, the twenty eighteen assessment came out, the tax year twenty eighteen. CSX has also challenged that. So, now, we're in the process, and I reached out to the litigator that helped us with filing of the previous petition, and he has filed another petition regarding the twenty eighteen tax assessment. So, we're protected there in the event, depending on what the outcome, all of this kind of depends on what the outcome with, with federal litigation, where that ends up, whether CSX would appeal it if it comes out favorable to D O R, whether D O R would appeal it if it comes out favorable to CSX, we don't know. But it does allow us to see the paper, um, if, if it turns the wrong way, and then we could try to at least have a conversation about whatever we can to, to help us avoid a big hit. Uh, just wanted to let you know, both of those situations, uh, particularly that of the CSX, we're, we are filed for twenty eighteen, uh, the, the requesting a contested hearing in that matter by the same group that filed for it again. Um, I received, I believe you guys, I, I would send to you by email, I hope you got the pleadings filed by South Carolina D N R Department of Natural Resources involving the, the roads that, that go through Palisades, Cold Flow down between Brighton and, and Silver Club. Uh, at the time I sent that to you, I told you I had not received the, the pleadings by mail, which is what they're required to do. I have now. I have not accepted service on it. I wanted to confirm you wanted to accept service on it. Uh, the thirty days for us to respond would begin, would start the count. If I, if I say tomorrow, tomorrow won't count, thirty days will start counting, Wednesday, we'll have at least one or two council meetings, uh, to discuss how you want to respond. My question tonight is simply, I think I got a consensus from you guys last time to go ahead and sign my name saying I accept this paperwork on behalf of Hampton County. And that's all I'm asking now, is, is that to be, is that what you want me to do?
That's what I recall we discussed previously, for you to accept it or sign for it.
All right. And, and finally, um, I think you saw, um, the contract without the, the dialysis, uh, that we're negotiating the sale of it. The contract, um, tracks the letter of the tenant, um, and I would, it, it's, it's a standard contract with standard terms, um, and I just wanted to tell you that. And I think you, did you both tonight go ahead and sign that contract? I think we did earlier, did, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, it was in the package, Eileen, and, and Eileen's version of it is the same version I got as the final version from the hospital's attorney. Any questions?
I have one. Uh, who signs it? Who signs it? Myself or the chairman?
The contract. It doesn't say it. I would, I would, in, in that circumstance, I would probably defer to the chairman and put his signature on the contract.
What's for me?
I'll go with that. Thank you. Bring us to item twelve point two, clerk's update, twelve point two point one. That's the under my mount on the paper, that the clerk had left me a note to, to defer that one. Um, I apologize, I covered it up. Uh, could you kind of tell us where we are in it at least?
Um, we are near completion. If you, um, give me maybe a couple more days and I'll have it.
Can you give us a date? Cause we keep kind of kicking this can down the road.
Four.
Fourth.
Let's, um, I'm going to give myself an extra day. Let's set it at eight.
The eighth? What time?
At close to eight.
All right, so five P M. on the eighth.
Mm-hmm.
All right, then we'll have it all finished then.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Bring us item thirteen, reports to counsel, thirteen point one, administrator's report.
I don't have much tonight, sir. I would like to state that the Double Shot Concert was a great success. I think, um, a good time was had by, by many. Uh, Mr. Phillips and his, uh, very able partner, uh, sweated a lot and put on a good show. Um, but I think everybody enjoyed it, I hope it's first of many. The Haunted House that, uh, the staff conducted at the Stanley Building was a great success. Uh, when Kenny Bozard cranked up the chainsaw, it did not have a chain on it, cranked up chainsaw. And there's one lady, I'm not sure if she stopped running yet. Um, there were a couple of them that took off out of the Stanley Building, and I'm not sure where they ended up. Thankful to say it seemed to scare more of the adults than it did the children. So, uh, I think, we all went, went home very tired, and we had, every time I'd go out and look, the line would be at the theater. So, I'd go back out and they'd say, "Where's the line?" I said, "The theater." They said, "That's what you said the last time." I said, "Well, I don't know if they're getting back in line or we're getting new people." So, um, they, they've already started planning a game for next year, but it was, um, I would, I would say, I'd call that a success as, as well. Great success for, uh, Lee Avenue, it's, uh, Merchant Salon there. Everybody seemed to just, you know, get into it. Um, a lot of thought went into most of the presentations. We did, we went in and cut the lights on in theaters so they would be kind of lighting up. That's kind of neat to see, the more opportunities to get it lighted up. Looks great down at night. Uh, the mural dedication, I don't know if any of you saw, it was reported on in the Island Packet and the Buford Gazette, also the Hampton County Guardian gave some great press. It was well attended, I believe, by, it was at least fifty?
I counted over sixty-five myself.
Over, yeah, so at least sixty-five, um...
It was also on W J C L.
Yeah, W J C L TV, that was the only TV station I saw. And, um, I was, it was awesome to see the entire contention from town of Hardyville, except for the mayor made it, and the, uh, chairman from Jasper County Council, Mr. Johnson was there, and Mr. Phillips and chairman there, of course. But I think everybody, uh...
Oil Council was there also.
Yemecy.
And Yemecy.
Yemecy Town Council. It was, uh, great to see all the, uh, you don't call them retired Marines, but all the Marines that came out. Um, I think they all really enjoyed it. Um, not sure who the young man was that was, I believe he was the preacher's child from Estle, from Waltonville?
I think so.
Waltonville.
Waltonville? Yeah. Uh, very, very impressive young man. I think he's joined the, some type of youth Marine Corps.
Young Marine.
Yeah, Mr. Russell may, can talk more than I can, but, um, I thought he was ve, very impressive. Uh, I, I wished I'd gotten a better, some better pictures or video of him.
Right.
It was kind of, kind of great to see. And that's, we'd like to say, you may see some, uh, planes flying in and around, uh, I believe it's with forestry this week, and possibly next week, they are actually, uh, State Forestry Commission is having some of the recertifications for their pilots and some updates that they have to do, and, but I'm here in Hampton.
Okay.
So...
All right.
That's all I have, sir.
Bring us, uh, item fourteen on the agenda, executive session. We have no matters to discuss in the executive session. Item fifteen, report out of executive session, there are no matters to report. Item sixteen, adjournment. Was the pleasure of counsel?
So move.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.